Hello? Wait. Let me put on some music. Good... Evening. Good evening, good evening. Stream is... Earlier than usual. Wait, why wouldn't it... Why is it soft? Okay, okay, I think that's fine. Yeah, yeah, it's early 'cause I gotta be at my friend's stream later, so we have an hour to do this thing. It'll be short since I feel like there wouldn't be very much, you know, content when it comes to Duolingo. Yes, "Kombawa!" Early gang? Yes, very early. Yeah, but don't worry, for the next streams it'll still be, uh, you know, 9pm in my time. Yeah, yeah, let's go try and speedrun Duolingo. Okay. I wonder if I'll be blocking the thing? Okay, okay. You know what I think? I think some people are really thrown off by the early schedule. I have a feeling that some people forgot. Okay, let's do a placement test. Also friends, hello, hah-hello. Take a test to you, jump ahead. Let's see, write this in Japanese. "Ai." "Watashi." Okay. Okay. "Ohaio-gozaimasu." "Ohaio..." "Gozaimasu." Why is it reading it? Okay, but whatever. "Amerika-shin desu." "I am from..." "US." Should there be... Should there be "iza?" Should there be... Should there be "za"? Should there be "za"? I don't know. "Konnichiwa." "Konnichiwa." "Ohaio." I'm from, let's say, I'm from the US. Okay. That is good. Continue. Aw, cute owl that will come to kill me in my sleep. Okay, continue. Good morning, it is summer... "Ohaio." "Nan-nan desu." How do you read that? "Shichiji." You know... I keep forgetting... I keep forgetting the numbers. "Ji-desu." "Ji-ji-ji, shichiji." Hello, Kampi, hello, hello, hello. 6% and you're no... Wait, where are you? Are you from, like, work or something? "Ani?" "Iee-e petto wa imasen?" What? Okay, I'm gonna open up the volume mixer since I cannot hear the audio. What's that? Like, for your life in Japanese, I can't. Oh. Ah, "petto wa!" I forgot the "wa." Ah, okay, okay. "Iee-e petto wa imasen." Okay, okay. Goodness, it is now 1 o'clock. Uh... "Ichiji." Uh... Is that correct? "Ichiji wa arimasen." Ah, "dei!" There should be "dei"! "Dei-wa-ari-masen." Okay, discuss, what does that mean? Did I break it? Oh! What? Why is it "dei-wa" and not just "wa"? It is not a particle, but part of the negative. Oh... Zen... Oh! Okay, I learned something. I learned something. So that is part of the negative. I never... Okay. When I was studying on my own, I don't think I've learned about "dei-wa." Okay, that is good. And now how do I go back? How do I go back? Wait, let me hide the window first. Uh, since this is in full screen and I'm not sure if I'll be showing something... Oh, okay, it's just the next tab. Okay, opened in a new tab. That's alright, that's alright. Okay, okay. Uh, F11. Okay, window is back. Okay. Nice, I learned something new! 1 o'clock, it is not. Yes. YouTube has a point system? Uh, the bot should have a point system, but like... I'm honestly... I'm honestly not sure if it's working. Ah. Good morning. Ah, "Ohaio-gozaimasu." Okay, there we go. "Hajime-mashite, Maria desu." "Maria desu, nice to meet you. I am..." "Maria." Oh, she's so cute! Look at her! "Kira-sensei, I'm not teaching, it's the Duolingo." Duolingo that's teaching the owl person. I forgot to do something! Wait, 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 I forgot to do something. Wait, wait. Dun... Dun... I forgot, can't believe... I forgot... Eh? "Ani?" It won't pin to my... Face properly. It won't... It won't, it won't pin! It's not straight! Oh no, I messed it up! Where do I even pin this? I'll just pin it to my hair, man. Like... It won't... It... It won't work properly, okay? There's nothing on my... There's... There's nothing on my nose to pin it. I better rig my own model some glasses? Okay, let's go. What is "warsaw"? Oh, "waru"? Honestly, I'm not sure. I don't know how to read katakana. Nice, it's reading it for me! From eyeglasses to eyebrow glasses, yes, that is correct. My eyebrows need to have 20/20 vision. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what "warsaw" is. I mean, where it is. "Waru-sho." "Waru-sha-wa." 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 "Wara-sha-wa." "Wara-sha-wa." Okay. 1 o'clock. "Desu." "Nijii." Hi. 5 o'clock. You know what I do? With these choices? I just look at the kanji for, you know, time and... These are... These are numbers, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. 4, 6, okay. Goodness. Russia? It's in Russia? Potter, "Potter Kira?" Pot... Kira Potter? Yeah, I swear, I'll be rigging glasses to my models, so I wouldn't have to... Do this? Okay, continue. "I go to sleep at 11pm." Uh, is there "watashi..." "Neru?" Uh, I don't know what the kanji for... No, no, no. "Ne." "Gogo." "Gogo." "Nemasu." Uh, 11pm. "Juichiji." "Juichiji." "Ni?" No. Wait, okay, I actually forgot how to use the "ni" particle 'cause... You shouldn't be using it in certain, um... At certain times, and I forgot when it's not used. "Nemasu." "Gogo." Ah, that's PM, wait! Ah, ah, that's PM, "gogo." "Juichiji." "Nemasu." I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I know where Russia is! Warsaw is in Poland? It's in Pol... Wait, wait, where, where? Russia or Poland? I'm struggling with katakana so much, I can't sing. You know what I... Okay, I gotta make myself a little bit smaller. You know what I thought before? I'm not gonna use it a lot, I better not... Oh gosh. There are a lot of people who have low batteries. Also, Ina. Okay. Oh, it's not. "Gogo juichiji ni." Ah, there we go. Okay, so when do I not use "ni"? I better check my notes later. "Nijii de wa..." "Nijii de wa-ari-masen." There. "Nijii de wa-ari-masen." "Yoji desu." It is 4 o'clock. It's 4 o'clock. Yes. No. It's 4 o'clock. Wait, why does... Wait, wait! This isn't... This is not fair, this is not fair. Why is... Why... I feel cheated, man. I feel cheated, man! Look! Why? Why? Why does "o" need to be separate? I don't get it. Wa... Scams! Is it too cc? Why are they separate? Yes, it is rigged, it is rigged! Is it 2 o'clock? Okay. "Goji desu." "Goji desu." It's 5 o'clock! Okay, thank... Dude, it's rigged, it's rigged, okay? Ah, why did I open a new tab? "Gakko ni iki-masen." "I..." "Go to school." "Ano?" "Gakko ni iki-masen." "Iki-masen." Is there... "Gakko ni..." Yeah, there isn't ta... Okay. Huh? I didn't... Ah! "Iki-masen?" Ah. Okay. Okay. Okay, let's move on. I totally, I totally knew... I totally knew what... What the... What the negative is? Is it glasses? Don't worry. Rigged like your model? Rigor gets rigged? Yes. Duolingo, how dare you? Why? Why did you... Why separate the "o" from "o'clock"? Come on. "Nanjidesuka?" What time is it? Core's Portugal. What are these choices? It's weird! Goodness, what time is it now? "Ima..." "Nanjidesuka." Okay, that was correct! What's "chodo"? "Chodo." "Ima wa chodo..." "Juujihan desu." I think that is... "Juujihan" is kind of like... "Han" is half. Is it? "Ima." Oh, is it? Ah, is it a country? It is now... 10:30? What? No, 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 maybe it's not a country, maybe it's like exactly... It is exactly... Oh my god, what, what, why is this difficult? It is exactly 10:13 now. I don't know what's "chodo." I don't know what "chodo." "Ima wa chodo juujihan desu." Ah! What's that? Yes, it's hair glasses. Okay. Oh! It's correct! So "chodo." "Chodo" is... Is exactly, okay. New word learned. Wait, let me open the volume mixer. I want it to be... Aloud. Loud. Loud. Loud, I'm speaking in a cussing... That's cringe. Okay, continue. "Sore wa nan desuka?" "Sore wa..." What? Is "densu"? No. "Sore wa..." What is that? Nice! Oh goodness. Also DJ Sanggo, hello, hello, hello. And chat, do not, do not give me the answers, okay? Like, even if I see chat, like, don't, don't give out the answers. "Tsukue desu." "Tsukue desu." Uh... What is? "Tsukue desu." What is "tsukue"? I don't know, "suke." I don't know what that is. "Tsukue." Oh, so it's a desk. "Sore wa boku-tachi no kiseki." What's "kiseki"? What's "kiseki"? Of course I will go. I don't know what "of course" is? "Mochiron." Guessing? I don't know... Oh! Right, so "mochiron, mochiron, mochiron." "Ikimasu." So that is... Okay. Nice! I don't know English. No, I do. What response? "Ichiji desuka?" "Ichiji desuka?" "Ichiji..." This is one, this is it. "Ichiji desuka?" Okay, check. Oh, continue! Yes, we've done the placement test. 10x be away from your daily goal. Okay? Nice, one day streak! That's so cute! Like, look at all the... Look at all the animations. So cute! Okay, continue. Test complete, you unlocked... 3%? Man, just 3%? Again, with this one-time streak freeze, you can miss one day of practice. Okay? Okay, you learned the skill Hirigana 1 and 1 other. What's 1 other? Uh, what is this? This is what I'm... What I was asking about. Is there a paywall? There is. What's unlimited test outs? Does that mean unlimited... Uh... Time? Like, times that you can do the tests? Like, how many things I can do in one day? Is it that? I don't know. Is this a game? It's Duolingo. I... Maybe it can be considered a game. I haven't touched Duolingo in 6 months. I am surprised, I am very surprised that you are alive, my dude. Oh, "anditas"? That's, that's what it means? Like... Okay, no thanks. I'll say no thanks for now. So, does that mean I get to take all of these? If I have the plus subsc... Whatever? Your glasses are moving a lot. Yeah, 'cause I pinned it to my hair, 'cause... If I pin... Okay, let me be still. If I pin it to my... It's not straight. If I pin it here, it won't... Look at that, man. I, I better... I better... I better really rig, um... Oh, it looks like I'm biting it, wow! Hey baby girl, you come here often? What if I... Put it here? Okay, that looks stylish. How do I rotate it? I'm making a big brain move. Ah, it's straight now! Okay. Let's keep the glasses there, so it won't be very distracting. Okay, let's go, let's go. Hirigana... Hiragana, Hirigana. What do you mean? Hiragana. "Girayona." "Harona." I know, I know what now, come on, man! The placement test is messed up. Like, obviously I've answered... I can't even read kanji, why are they making me do this? Why? I can read some kanji, what? Come on, anyway, let's do it. Start. Start! There's no way my teacher is this cute, there is a way! Which one of these is bird? This one? "Tori." Has a picture. "Tori." Dog. "Inu." Hi. Write this in English, bird. "Tori." Okay, "tori," cat, "neko." Okay. "Neko," match the pairs. Huh? What? What am I supposed to do? Click? Ra? What? Ne, chi, ra? Oh, okay, 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 okay. I'm actually confused by these two characters. Like, yeah. Cool, 5 in a row, thanks! "Neko." A cat. Cat. If this has "a" at the beginning... Okay. Okay, okay, it's still correct. Match the pairs. This is "sto..." Uh... "Ne." "Ne." "Ke." "Ke." "Inu," "dog"? Perfect! Say "perfect." Continue. One ling... What's a "lingot"? "Lingot"? What's a "lingot"? "Ratto," yeah, "ratto," rat. Why am I Pyro Archon? I'm not even that red! Wait, you know, actually, speaking of that, I really thought that Kazuhua... Kazuhua was a Pyro character? And I was so confused when I learned that Kazuhua was actually... You know? Wind guy? Why is it... Oh, lesson 1 of 5. Okay, we have a lot of stuff. Which of these is back? "Senaka." Wh-when am I gonna use this "senaka"? "Ai." "Ne." "Me." 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 What does the sheep say? "Me." 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 "Senaka." "Senaka," back? Peach burning? Yeah, I'm burning. Burning, um, I don't know. Which of these is ear? "Mimi." 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 Okay, ear is "mimi." "Me." "Me." "Mi-" "mi." "Mimi." Yeah! "Mimi," yeah, okay. Not all people know that. Okay, continue. Match the pairs. "Mi." "Mi." "Se." "Me." I'm confused again! "Ne." "Mu." Okay, there we go. Hi Saifan, welcome back! "Me." "Ai." Okay! Match the pairs. "To." "Too." "Se." "Se." "Mi." "Mi." Ah, "me nu." Oh, it's reading it. Oh. I can cheat. Okay, yay! Dun dun! You've earned 70 experience today, thanks! No! No, okay, let's do it again. It's okay, so "mimi," ear. "Me." Is back. And... What's the other one? I forgot. Ah no, "me." Back, I forgot what "back" is, wait. Okay, let... I'm gonna check later. The glasses are floating, yes, it is. Which of these is winter? "Fuyu." 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 "Fuyu," winter, okay? "Natsu." Okay. I mean, why did I even think? "Gochian, gudan arigato." Thanks! Match the pairs. Uh... "Fu." "Tu." "Yu." "Me." "Ne." "Fuyu." "Fuyu," that's winter, okay? Okay. "Ts." "Yu." "Se." "Fu." "Ne."
Ne. So. So. Se. E. E. Ne.
Heiya.
Se. E. So, ne. E. Chizu. Chizu. Chizu.
Kaze. 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 Kaze.
Kaze.
Emoji. Emoji. Emoji.
Ji. So. Za. Ze. Zu.
Chizu.
Za. Ze. Zu. So. Zu. Ji.
Uh no. I have a rea... I think it's okay to speak now. I have a reactive PNG. Like, it's in a server. It's in a server. But I'm not, I'm not gonna be like streaming my part. I'm, I'm gonna end stream. Yeah, at eight. Okay, let me mute again. It's kind of hard to tell if anyone is speaking because the music is a little loud on my end. Yeah, so you guys can hear... Can hear the music too, so I make it loud on my end. I don't know. It's kind of like an imbalance of the feedback as well as the... Yeah, an imbalance on the mic's feedback volume and the desktop sound, so yeah. It'll be a little bit hard to hear if anyone's speaking, so I think I'll mute when... I don't know. I don't know. Eh, maybe I can do this as a push-to-talk thingy? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hmm. Yeah, I was, I was muted because people were like being loud. Yep. Yep, 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 yep. This model's so cute. I can't help but smiling every time I see her model. Of course! I'm a master rigger. I wonder if Duolingo has some kind of, um, vocabulary review? I hope it does. I hope it does. Phone map. Uh!
Chizu.
Chizu.
Kudamono?
Kudamono.
Kudamono?
Okay. Koda... Wata shi wa kudamono desu.
Denua?
Denua?
De. To. Da. Ge. Ze.
Kudamono?
To. Za. De. Da. Go.
Wata shi wa kudamono ku... Ah, ah, kudamono wo tabemasu. Ku... Kudamono tabemasuka? Ah no, ah... Ah, so, 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 so. Also Noah, thank you for stopping by! Sorry to see you go. What did it say?
Bi.
Bi.
Bi. Bi, 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 bi.
Kaban? 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 This is wind. Kaze.
Kaze.
You know, why isn't Kazuhua... Kazuhua?
Kaze.
Kaban?
Bi.
Huh?
Bi. Bi, 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 bi.
Bi, 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 sabine ni.
Bento.
Lunch. Ah! Boxed lunch? Yes! Match the pairs. I think
Bu.
Mu. Ba. Bi. Bebo. So, the correct character is for bi. Ba.
Ba.
Bi. Bu. Bebo.
Kaban?
Kaban? Beg. Okay. Yeah, Kazuhua. It makes sense, right? It makes sense, right, Kazuhua? Yeah, look, leaderboard's nice. I wanna start again. Huh? Eh?
Tenpura?
Ah, tenpura.
Enpitsu?
Enpitsu? Pencil. Kei. Ah, ah, ah!
Ba.
Ba. Pi, pi, pi. Fu.
Pu.
Pe. Bo. Pa.
Ba.
Pi.
Pi.
Fu. Pe. Bo. Nice! Konbanwa, konbanwa, Hachiko-san. Konbanwa, irashai. Also, hello! I cannot read your name. Ba. Ha. I actually learned how to read Hangul before. I forgot all about it now.
Ocha.
Ocha. That is... That's tea, right? Okay. Oh, it's green tea! Ocha. Okay, that's ocha. What is, what is tea? Cha? Eh, I don't know, I don't know. It's weird though that I realized that kaban is different in J... What's kaban in J? I don't rem... I don't remember what that is. Wanna say big "thank you for your helpful live 2D tutorials. You're truly a goddess."
Kyu.
Like kyuu. Kyu!
Kyu.
Noin. Kyo. Kyo. To dai. Continue. Match the pairs. Ki.
Gi.
Ba. Kyo.
Kyo.
Kyu. Cha. Okay, okay. I forgot my little knowledge in Chinese, so... I only know... I don't know one word. Cha. Uh, cha. Wait, what is this? Oh, it's big. Oh, it's bigger. I can
Cha.
I can barely see the difference. Kyo. 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 Ki.
Cha. Ge.
Kyu. Okay, mm. Thank you for the super chat, Saki. Thank you! Kira is my stand-on damn! I didn't know... I didn't know that there was VTuber biases. Kyu.
Kyu.
Kyu. Kyu. Oh yeah! Kyu. Kyu.
Kyu.
Kyu.
Etohime Saki just burned fifty pesos. Keep doing your best and we're always proud of you.
Oh, the settings I did didn't save, Saki. Okay. Kira's my stan, Kira's my stan. Fermented soybeans!
Natto.
Natto. I actually want to... Uh no, uh... Uh, uh, wait, wait, uh... Natto wa tabetai. Yes. Gakko. Ga.
Gakko?
Gakko. Kyotileki... looo! Goodness.
Gakko?
Best wife. Wow! Gakko. School. Um, Hiragana? Hiragana. Okay, this one.
Kippu.
Huh? Uh no?
Kippu.
Kippu! Ticket. Kippu! Kippu! How do you say movie ticket? I forgot what the word for movie is. Movie, movie. Cinema. Ah, natto. Natto wo tabetai. Hai. Wata shi mo natto. Natto wo tabetai. Ah, ah! Natto wa... natto, natto wa ja nai. Ah, so, 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 so. Arigato. Okay, okay. Do. Pe. Gi.
Gi.
Chi.
Kippu.
Kippu.
Natto.
Natto. Fermented soybeans. Continue! Dun dun! Dun dun dun! Wow! Yes! Oh, more skills. More skills for me?
Sensei.
Sensei... Ah, sensei, sensei. Sensei. Hai. Sensei. Hai. Mm-hmm. You learn that movie is eiga. Cinema is eiga. Huh? What's the difference between eiga and eiga-kan? And if you wanna say movie ticket, do you say, uh, eiga no... Eiga, eiga no kippu? Ka? Goodness. My dad eats natto with mustard and seaweed and... What does it taste like, though? Streaming is perfect to listen to while doing commissions. Eh, I'm glad! Kira wa something, something desu. Uh, uh, I don't know how to read that kanji, though. Hmm. Teacher. Sensei. It's nice that they're introducing kanji.
Sensei.
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 Konnichiwa.
Konnichiwa. Hai.
Arigato.
Arigato. Thanks! Tinks? Tinks? So, the correct character is for sensei. This one. Is this for student?
Gakusei.
Yeah.
Sensei. Gak... sensei, gakusei?
This is student. Is this student? Gakusei?
Sensei. Arigatou gozaimasu.
Arigatou gozaimasu. Thank you! Okay, there we go.
Ohayou gozaimasu.
Sensei, ohayou gozaimasu. Good morning, teacher! Oh yeah! Thank you for the super chat!
Hachiko honey, Hachiko honey, CH. Just burned rub one hundred. Thank you, so muuuch. I really appreciate your work. Fire!
Thank you! Wait, I'm curious. What country... What country is that? Rob... 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 Kira sensei? Hai. Hai. Uh, kira wa... Kira wa... Uh no, live, live 2D no... Sensei desu? Oh, Russia? Russia? Oh! Oh, I didn't know! Okay! Okay, I didn't know. So... Be. This eh...
Sensei.
Sensei. Gakusei. Okay.
Ohayou?
Ohayou? Ohayou?
Ohayou?
There we go. Ohayou? Uh, uh, kyuu, kyuu. Kyu.
La.
Za. Uh...
Sensei.
Gakusei.
Sensei.
Sensei. Teacher? Hmm. Umai. Oh! Uh, uh, how do you say which one? Kore. Ah, kore. Dore wa... Dore... Eh? Dore wa... Umai desu ka? I'm not sure. Great word. Let's make this a bit harder. Yabai, yabai. Teacher, good morning. Sensei. Ohayou? Ah, sensei, ohayou... Oh, I forgot that you were supposed... Oh, gozaimasu, gozaimasu. Oh, 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 okay, okay. Ah, 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 ah. So, that is polite, right? If you have gozaimasu. Okay, if Kira's my sensei, I will never miss a class even if I'm sick, then. Oh, forgot gozaimasu, yes. Um, yeah, yabai, 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 yabai. Yabai, yabai. Sensei. Konnichiwa.
Gozaimasu.
Uh, hindi, hindi you gonna write. It's not, it's not like that, right? Sensei, konnichiwa. Is this correct? Goodness. Kira, how are you? Uh no, if you're not... Okay, as what Saki said, if you're not Japanese... If you're not Japanese- If you're not Japanese and you are able to speak in English, please do speak in English. Okay, let's あこんにちは御座い Okay. Okay. There is no御座い。Okay, there is no御座います。
先生
おはよう御座いますうん There we go. うん Yeah, like, I would really just try to read if I know that someone is uh, Japanese, like yeah Eh, thank you! 番薯
ガンバタ
What did she say? ガンバタ Baka Why is it like that? Okay, start.
願い
あ、ごちさん said 先生こんにちは御座いね、ね、ね、ねはい、はい。先生こんにちはあの
願い
願い願い 何？これは何？ 願いごめんなさいごめんなさい I am sorry. Nice!
願い
What's願い?
願い
願い
すみません
すみません。Excuse me?
どうもありがとう
どうもありがとう。Thank you very much! はいあの願い
願い
願いは 何ですか？
あ、おはようございます
あ
おはようございます
ああ Good morning, Mino!
よろしくお願いします
おね
よろしくお願いします
漢字
よろしくお願いします
I just wanna see the漢字。願い is wish? 願い is wish. I believe in you. Kirara Kirara? 願い
よろしくお願いします
Oh, it's wish. あ、nice to meet you! Okay! Match the pairs. ぶぶじあ、いや先生
先生
学生
学生
願い
願い
願いうん私の something 願い。あ、私のあ、ねあ、私の願いは Kiraの something, somethingを 見ることですはい good いいねとっても
どうぞよろしくお願いします
とってもいいねはい
どうぞよろしくお願いします
どうぞどうぞどうぞどうぞ nice nice to meet you どうぞよろしくお願いします あ、okay Ten in a row, you've learned so much! どうぞどう
どうぞ
よろしくすみません すみません。Excuse me! Good. Let's make this a bit harder. ああありがとう御座いますえ
ごめんなさい
え
よろしくお願いします。どうもありがとう
あ Please excuse me. すみー
すみません
すみませんあどうも すみません。あ、what doesどうも どうも mean? ははどうもどうもは 何？ Oh, let me see what it means. Also, 7:55, we have five minutes left. Not correct. Wait, I wanna know whatどうも is. どうも is impolite way for thanks. あどうもあ between どうぞどうもください どうぞ。When you give permission to the listener to do something, as if you're a host, どうも, intensify a succeeding polite phrase. あ ください。To ask the listener to give you something or do something. Okay. あ、okay. I gotta remember this one. どうぞ Give permission, どうも, to intensify a succeeding polite phrase. ください。Okay. Continue. たんたんひ一つの something として something えてしまって something, something ですよ You'll be able to remember it as a single sentence. あ、あ、あ。はい、はい、はい。Okay, last one, I think. Yeah, last one. Last one
さようなら
さようなら。Goodbye. And then I'll be ending stream and going over to Kie-chan since it's her birthday. こんばんは。Good evening!
では、さようなら
では さようなら。Well, then. Farewell. Okay.
こちらこそ
こちら 何？
こちらこそ
こっちうー
こちらこそ
こちらこそ Likewise? おーこっち